And welcome to Matt Talks Back, technically episode number seven, but since it's a relaunch, we're going to call it relaunch episode number one. And joining us on the show today is Prince George City Councillor Trudy Klassen, a new councillor to our ring of councillors in the last election. And she's already making some big moves, putting some motions forward to hopefully help the city be more efficient and work in a much better system. Trudy, welcome to the show.
Thank you very much for having me. I'm thrilled to be here. I'm just, I love new content creators. I think that's the best thing ever.
Absolutely. Yeah. You know, I worked in radio, of course, for quite a while, 24 years I worked in radio. I had some amazing mentors here in the community. Ben Meisner was probably the most impactful. I think just the way that he approached not only issues, but people was very interesting. I think the number one thing that Ben taught me early on that kind of made me want to do this podcast was that everybody that you meet has something that they can teach you. You just have to be willing enough to be patient enough to try and get it out of them because not everybody communicates the exact same way that you do. Actually, I'll start off the show just by telling you a story of how Ben kind of hammered that home for me. I was working the front desk for CKPG many years ago when Ben was doing his show. And one of the things that they told us that we had to do was make sure that Ben was safe because there was a lot of people coming in that wanted to talk to Ben. And some of them maybe a little bit off their rocker. We had one guy come in one day that was, you know, probably had some mental issues, probably had some stuff going on. He was ranting and raving a little bit, and I was trying to shuffle him out the front door. Ben was coming out of his office door at the same time. He had just finished his show. And as I was pushing him out the door, he grabbed my hand and he said, Matt, I got this. And he took the guy into the back room while he was doing his copies of all of his notes that day. And he had about a 20 minute chat with the guy. He had to keep kind of getting him back onto his story, but he finally got out of the guy that the government had actually canceled his checks and he had no money anymore. So the guy was homeless, had absolutely no resources. And within a week, Ben actually had that guy back on his resources and had his checks in again. I went to him shortly after he had that conversation. I said, I'm sorry, Ben, like, I just wanted to get that guy out of the way. I didn't want the crazy guy chatting with you. And he said, Matt, I'll tell you something right now. He said, you have to listen to the crazy, because there's always a little bit of truth in the crazy somewhere. If you're smart enough, you'll be able to pull it out. So.
Exactly. And that actually, it's, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm an old fan of Ben Meisner's as well. And like, and I didn't know that about him, about listening to the crazies. But it's always been sort of my contention as well is like, I know in, in the political world, there's an awful lot of attention being paid right now to the idea that, oh, my goodness, politicians are getting hammered, they're getting harassed, they're getting beat, they're having, being called names, et cetera. And I'm never totally on board because it's like, no, if people are angry, oh, yeah. And then there's a lot of talk, of course, about how, you know, there's supposed to be all this decorum. And it's like, well, like, if people are angry, and, and, and you've got to take time to listen, there's a reason that they're angry. Most people are reasonable, but they may be angry. Or in the case of this fellow with the, the issue with the government checks, he was no longer getting the support he needed. And, you know, just because they're not able to express it in a way that's, you know, that we consider civil or appropriate, doesn't mean that they don't have an actual legitimate issue.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. You must have had, you know, some experience in this as well. You've got quite the background in communication yourself. You worked with the Prince George Citizen as a columnist for quite a while. You must have had some back and forth with citizens during that time, too.
Yeah, but I never, I mean, I, I would read the comments on my articles for sure. But I never, you know, occasionally there was somebody that said something like loony and it's like, well, whatever. It's, I didn't, I mean, frankly, I didn't have time to check everything out. But criticisms were always, I always welcomed them and, and tried to see, okay, are they legit? And if they are, it was like, oh, I was so deeply wounded because I felt like I had left, let my readers down. But then that helps make you get, do better work, right? And get better.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. I think the world really has a perception problem these days. A lot of the things that are being said seem to be quickly misperceived. And there's also a lot of people out there that want you to misperceive things that are being said, too. So I think long form conversation is going to be very important in the coming days to make sure that we're understood.
Yeah.
I think when we're communicating, what we first do is put out an idea. And then you need to kind of wiggle in the rest of that idea to make sure it's understood fully. And in this day and age, we're all about that quick sentence that somebody throws out there and then we judge them on it immediately. So I think podcasts are going to be a way to go to kind of fix that. And that's what I want to do for Northern BC up here as well.
Well, I'm just thrilled that somebody's doing it. And yeah, I mean, if, I don't know if you know, but I'm currently hosting a radio program on CFIS on Thursday mornings. And there's a few of us doing, well, there's, they've got someone every morning, and which is lovely. And I'm terrible at the five second clips. Like, I find myself whenever I'm interviewed by our, either, like by a number of our different, either audio or, or visual media, like CKPG, I'm, I'm really bad at giving them those five second clips they're looking for. And so I'm, I'm much, I like to think I'm better on the long form. So I'm a fan.
Awesome. Awesome. Yeah, that's what I got in trouble for. It's one of the reasons I had to leave, too. When I first got into radio, they wanted you to be tight on your time. But, you know, if I had a great interview on, I was allowed to talk for five minutes if I had something good to say. By the time I left, the last radio station I was with, they actually had this structure where we were only allowed to talk for 45 seconds. And 15 seconds of that 45 seconds was actually structured where they actually had lines we had to say. So it really, really made it hard to communicate overall with that type of a structure going on. And I like that the world seems to be angling back towards long form.
And, and, and what you're saying there is very interesting. If you think about the medium is the message. Because what doesn't get brought across to people, to the public, when you've got that so tightly scripted?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Let's, let's dive into some questions here. Now, you're a longtime Citizen columnist, as we mentioned, you're a talk show host as well. You do a show over on CFIS. You're a former logging business owner and a serial volunteer member for many organizations around Prince George. So you really do have your hand in many of the pies out there. What was your logging business?
We were, we had a, owned a piece of logging equipment and we subcontracted to, to contractors, I guess. Some of the major, some of them more minor, but that's what we did for 20 years, 20 plus, plus years. And most of that time was up the lake, which, which is how it's said, up on the north end, or on the west side, further north of Williston Lake.
Oh, okay. Right on, right on. Yep. Okay. So you're very well versed then when it comes to forestry, which is something that is still running Northern BC up here. Forestry and mining kind of in the, in the same area there. Now, has politics in the civic realm always been something that you've been passionate about? Or did something kind of push you to really dive in and run for council on this last election cycle?
Well, politics has always been incredibly fascinating to me. I grew up listening to my dad discussing politics with me. And actually, that goes right back to, I mean, I was in school, probably, gosh, was I, around 11 or 12, when the Charter of Rights and Freedoms was being written. And my teachers would be all gaga over it and telling us how wonderful it was that we would finally have these new rights. And my dad was just, oh, he was so upset. And he would argue every time with me about, no, Trudy, the problem is when you, when you codify laws, it, it makes, it actually takes, removes rights. He said, it's much better to go simply the constitutional route because we have way more rights. As soon as you begin to codify rights, there's fewer rights. And I think.
What do you, what do you mean by codify? Just for anybody that might not understand?
Yeah. So by, by saying, so the Constitution of Canada is written in such a way that, that it only says, I think so, if I get this right, it's only written for what you don't, you're not allowed to do. Whereas the Charter of Rights and Freedoms tells you what you are allowed to do. And so obviously that narrows it. And, and, and I, and I know that the French Civil Code is written also in that way. The, it's written, this is what you may do, and rather than what you may not do. And so whenever someone tells you what you can do only, and that all the other things that you might do are illegal, well, that list of illegal things is much longer. And so if you're just told, and basically, if you want to think of it in religious terms, think of the Ten Commandments, 10 things that thou shalt not do. And so all the other things are allowed, but only these 10s you may not do. So that, I think that's probably, even in this day and age, when, when most people are considered themselves secular, I think they still understand that.
Yeah. Okay. That's, that's interesting. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. That makes a lot of sense then. Now, when it comes to Prince George City Council, can you kind of give me a rundown of what it was like, first of all, going through the election cycle and then being elected? I know there is a little bit of time there, of course, where you kind of have to learn the position, what you're able to do, what you're not able to do, much as, as you just said, and how you can be an effective councillor. This is something that I get in a conversation with residents regularly. You constantly hear people when they start getting mad about how things are going in the city, they're like, we got a clean house, fire all the councillors. My, my thing that I've been saying recently is we can't keep doing that. Because number one, these councillors, it takes time for you guys to learn, first of all, how to be an efficient councillor overall. And I don't understand it. I've never been through it myself. But my guess is that probably takes at least a year to even understand how to start being an efficient councillor and how to start making really good moves. So if we're turning around and judging our councillors every three years and then firing them back out again, we're never going to be able to move forward or have any understanding in these systems that we have. So if you could explain a little bit what that first few months was like for you and kind of what the process was like to becoming a councillor and now making some motions that are hopefully going to make some big changes here in PG?
All right. All right. So a lot of people, first, I'll just say something to the, you know, the often refrain of, oh, we just need to fire everybody and get better people in there. And the truth is that we actually don't. Prince George has five incumbent councillors who have been in either, the, the five incumbents were in, this was all their third election, I think, second, yeah, third, I think. And so we actually don't fire the whole lot of them. And two of them came from the school district. So actually, on this council, you've got seven long-term incumbents, if you want to say, call anybody who's done at least two terms. And then just there, and then there's just me or you and myself who are brand new. And, and then, and in, in regards to how long does it take you to sort of figure things out? I'd say probably about a year. Yeah. It, and, yeah, I think that's about right. It's, I think it's, there's a lot of things that complicate the process, too. And, and, and I'll speak to that because actually, one of my motions, notice of motions that Brian Skaken and I collaborated on speaks to that a little bit. So I can talk about that later.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Okay. What was the first issue you took, actually, quickly, just on that point of being in for a year? That totally makes sense. Now, I'm in a, in a sales job where, you know, my actions in my job change from season to season as well. So you do not understand that job fully until you get through a full year. It's going to be the same thing with city councillors. Wintertime, you guys are looking at snow budgets. Summertime, you guys are looking at gardening budgets and making things look good budgets and sweeping the gravel off the road budget. So it makes sense that a full year has to go in before you even understand things. Another year, maybe, before you can, you know, see where you can kind of get your, your hands in there a little bit and make some, some moves. And then, you know, that third year, finally, you're kind of ready to get in there and do the thing. But really, councillors don't have the full breadth of their resources and their knowledge until they're at least two or three years into this thing and moving forward. So I think what we need to do is find councillors that have the same thought processes, same vision of the future is what we're looking for, and let them make some mistakes and go through, through some things.
Yeah. And I think too, one thing that I'd like to say is I think people need to be aware that when they're electing a councillor, they're electing someone who is going to be essentially on the Board of Governors of a roughly $200 million institution, corporation. Because that is what, that is what we're doing. And it's, so I would urge voters, this is not a popularity contest, this is not a, oh, you know what, I, I think that person is nice, so I'm gonna, and it's like, no, you actually need to vote for someone who, who can, who's able to, to properly govern an organization of that size and that sophistication. Because let me tell you, the, the administration are sophisticated and, you know, we're coming in, especially councillors are coming in, this is a part-time job for most, and you've only got part-time time to dedicate to it. And so that's, I think, so you have to have somebody who's actually capable of getting that important governance job done in the short amount of time they have.
The way things are set up right now, does it feel like it's a battle between you and admin, rather than a working job between you and city admin in some of these processes?
It's interesting. I mean, I certainly came to the, to the role, as you know, like in my articles in The Citizen, I was quite critical often of, of both admin and, and council. And so that put me at a little bit out of, at a, you know, you walk into your first council meeting and, you know, you know that you are not really welcome. And, and just, you know, being okay with that is one thing. You have to really be okay with that. And then it, it, it took me, I'm not sure how long it took me, but it, I mean, the, the, the notice of motion that I have in front of, of council for coming up at the next meeting is actually the, like, I really think that that is a major part of the problem. And it's not just, it's, it's, it's systemic. It's around Prince George, around BC. Any community that has a, a single employee model is going to come up against, against this, this poorly incentivized setup that we have. So I think, I think that, 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 like, council relies almost entirely on what administration tells us. And I know the, you know, I always had my suspicions before, but I really, when I, so back to when I walked into council that first time, I was really prepared. I really wanted to give everyone the absolute benefit of the doubt and, and, and understand that everyone is here working together for the same good of the cities. And so that is what I truly, honestly did. And, and now I see that, well, the problem is the incentives. The incentives are all wrong. And unless we fix that, you're relying on, on actually a bit of magic in order for things to work really well. Because I think the way it's set up right now, the voter is absolutely, the voter's will is not met in the current system. And so that's why, that was the reason for my motion. Because I really believe that in a democracy, you actually have to be able to fulfill what the voters voted for.
Hundred percent. We're going to dive into your motion here in a second. I actually have the motion that we're going to put up on the screen. So people can kind of pause and read it themselves, and then we'll kind of go over the wording a little bit, too. But I just kind of want to go over from a 10,000 foot level, sort of the future of where we came from and where we are right now, too. I don't know if people remember who Beth James was. Beth James was a former city manager who we fired. Fired. Everybody gets all excited when we say those words, but we paid her $500,000 to leave, is what we.
Yes, of course you did.
We did the exact same thing the second time with, oh, her name is now. Thank you, Kathleen Soltes, after the underground parking debacle that went down and the communication and some of the lies and stuff that came out of that, too. Everybody got excited about that. Once again, we paid her $500,000 to leave. So that's a million dollars we paid in two city managers back to back to just lock out the door. Minimum. And I'm sure there was more in there, too. We also have, you know, I've heard of some things happening, like city managers giving no bid contracts to construction companies and then walking across the floor and going to be major managers of those same construction companies within a year or two of those deals going down, too. We have some things going on in the background. And like you said, the way the rules are set up, it's pretty easy for those things to be hidden. It's gotten to the point that people know about them. We know it's happening. We can see it happening. We know people that are in the middle of it, but we can't fix it. So let's dive into these motions a little bit here. I do have the notice of motion up there. It's the UBCM resolution for 2025. Maybe you can speak to this a little bit. I'll just kind of read sort of what's here and then you and I can kind of go through it. So what it says is, the recommendation is the council endorsed this UBCM resolution for 2025, strengthen council governance. Whereas the Community Charter undermines voter intention by misaligning council and municipal officers incentives, as section 152 requires a two-thirds vote of all council members to terminate a municipal officer. Whereas section 151 mandates to review suspensions at the next meeting is too short to properly review a suspension thoroughly. Therefore, it is resolved that UBCM call on the provincial government to amend the Community Charter section, allowing termination of a municipal officer by a simple majority vote of council members present with notice and opportunity to be heard. You want to speak to this a little bit? How, how is this going to fix things for you guys?
Yeah. And I know, and it's quite wordy. So what I would say is that, the current, the incentive, like I was saying before, the incentives are wrong. So when you look at what it, so in our case, we have nine members of council. And in order to, to be able to remove a municipal officer, of which our CAO is one, is for any of them. So that there's the CAO, there's the, there's the financial officer and the corporate officer who's in charge of legislative services. In order for any one of those positions to be removed, you actually have to have six votes. So if you look at the citizen, at the, at the incentive for those people in that position, they only need to keep four members of council happy. And so the incentive is not, so if you, so by making the rule, which my motion is hoping that UBCM would endorse, is for only a majority of five council members to, to have to vote to remove, then suddenly the, are those four, those three positions in our city, for any one of them, they would need to please, I mean, please, and a, a minimum of five members of council. And so it's make it more likely that they would, that, or it would make the incentive much, for them to serve council more broadly, rather than give, than provide the potential for there to be just basically for council, members of council that have maybe a great relationship with the CAO and, or, or whatever, and, and thereby sort of, sort of, remove the authority or the governance power of the rest of council. And so that's my concern. And I think it's, it's a real problem within the system. And I don't understand why, like, every other vote on council is a majority, a simple majority vote, five out of, five out of nine. But for this position, it's six out of nine. So I don't understand what the rationale was for doing it. It could be that, like, the Community Charter and, and the Local Government Act are, like municipalities are creatures of what we say are creatures of the government, the provincial government. And so maybe they put that in there because they didn't really trust local, like, maybe that's what the problem is. Maybe they didn't trust local politicians to be able to govern effectively or properly. And so they wanted administration as, and especially senior administration to have really, really strong ability to remain in their positions despite the majority of council having concerns. So maybe that was the rationale. I don't know. But I think it's a problem. Because I really feel that that is the reason that when people look at who, who, or how a council is functioning, and they're frustrated with the lack of action on this, that, or the other thing, I think that's part of the reason for it.
Hundred percent. Yeah. It's, it is strange that everything is a 50% vote civically, except for this one thing, which is the person that is in charge of actually spending all of our tax dollars suddenly gets a little bit more protection somehow. Kind of weird the way that went down, but interesting anyway. Yeah. Okay. There was another resolution that you put forward here as well. And this one was for the Prince George Citizen. Let's pull that one up as well. Here it is. So reinstating publics, public notice advertising in the Prince George Citizen. I'll do a quick little sweep of this one and then we can chat about it again. So as it says, once again, whereas section 94.1 of the Community Charter mandates that public notices be published in a local newspaper such as the Prince George Citizen, the city's paper of record, unless no local paper exists, which does not apply to Prince George. Whereas council's recent resolution prioritizes local, provincial, and Canadian advertising sources over American platforms like Meta, supporting the wholly locally owned Prince George Citizen and regional economy. Whereas the city shift to Meta, city websites and email subscriptions for public notices limits access for residents without digital platforms countering the Community Charter's intent for equitable access and risking non-compliance. Whereas the Prince George Citizen's investigative journalism has driven transparency reforms such as enhanced capital project oversight and whistleblower policies. There is some more here as well.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll link this as well. So anybody that wants to read it full, full through will be able to do that. But let's chat about this a little bit, too. So, oh, I lost you. Let's get you back on the screen. There you are. So Prince George Citizen, of course, used to be the place where all public notices went to. I know the city has backed off of this in the past. Now, personally, I was sort of okay with it. And the reason being is this, I was a part of radio before social media came along, when we were in charge of launching new music and everything. And everybody was kind of focused on us. Now, when social media hit and streaming came along, all of a sudden, everybody was getting their information from different places. So when I saw this come up and I saw you guys speaking about it, I was like, I feel like we've reached a point where maybe the citizen doesn't service enough people for it to be viable for a $100,000, you know, payment to keep this thing going year over year. But let's talk about it. Why, why do you think the citizen should stay in, in, in this process?
So I, okay, so I'll, I'll start with the, the local paper of record. So that's the Community Charter. And basically, what the local paper of record that provision was there for is to ensure that all the information that people needed and wanted in terms of doing business with, even with the city, was all in one location. If you go to our city's website, it's, there's a lot of broken links. The public notices, you can only look back at them. Yeah, you know, I know your, your face. Public notices are only available to be looked at up to a year after the date that they posted. And it is excruciatingly difficult to find anything, although I must say that CKPG, the manager there, I was having a bit of an email back and forth with them and I'm going to be meeting up with them because he was like, well, wait a minute, you can easily find stuff. And he gave, he gave me a little inside tip that I didn't know of how to find stuff on the city website. So that helped. However, it didn't help with public notices. It didn't help with a lot of the archival information that I was looking for. And, 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 and I should say that I was looking for. And that was in preparation for this motion because a lot of people came to me, you know, citing their concerns. And I know in conversations that I've had with, with, I know even with the previous editor of The Citizen, Neil Godbou, he said, like, we get, they were getting so many phone calls from Realtors asking, hey, what's, where can I find this? Where can I find that? Because the city's website is simply either too clunky or just is the information isn't available there. And, and the citizen became, even in its diminished state, was still the place where that information was found. And, and ever since, I'm not sure when it happened, but I know that one of Traile Moro, who was recently deceased, one, because he was always interested in archives. And one of his great complaints was that the city had, like, the city itself had actually gotten rid of a bunch of historical, historically important information. And because we didn't have a proper archive. So at this point, in the, in the city of Prince George, we're only relying on what CNC has, what UNBC has, and what the Prince George Citizen has. Now, the city does keep some materials, but we don't have an official archive. And so the citizen actually fulfills a, a big portion of that public service. And this, it's the kind of information that nobody thinks is important until you need it. And it's, I, I know that, you know, I think 40 years ago, like, our small medium business class is, like, I'm not sure where it is in the statistics right now, but it's that group of people who are wanting to do development, who are wanting to build. I mean, for, I mean, okay, here's a good example. When the fire hall was built, the new one on Massey Drive, the people in charge of building it were very shocked to discover that underneath the dirt was an old landfill. So why, yeah. Now, where was that information? The information would have been in the archives, but because we either don't have them, or we don't respect them, or nobody checked with the citizens or anywhere to see, okay, what's the history of this area? They had to do a major excavation before the fire hall could be built. And I think that added probably, like, at least $100,000 to the cost of the fire hall. I think that's minimum. I think it was actually significantly more than that. But that's the kind of information that, you know, nobody's spending their day thinking, oh, I'm wondering what was under here. Or, or, except when it matters. Suddenly, you're building a fire hall and you discover, oh, my goodness, there was a landfill. And, and then suddenly what happened is people were said, like, some of the older, older people in our city would say, well, wait a minute, we knew that there was a landfill there. Why didn't you ask us?
You've hit on something here. This exact thing came up during the underground parking fiasco, too. Because as that was being built, there was lots of us that knew people that told us, hey, that's a water table right there. Just so you know, there used to be a creek that ran right along the base of Canot Hill. And there was lots of people that knew it, lots of talk about. And there was lots of people that knew it, lots of talk about it in the community. Yet they went ahead and built it anyway. And what do you know? We had leakage problems and we had to bathtub that bad boy. And I, I didn't even think of that. But if we had had archives, somebody could have known that. I mean, I could have sent them out for a coffee with six guys that I know that could have told them the same thing. So.
I know. Well, and that's, and that's, and, and, and in, and in that, that's another issue with administration that I was just having a conversation with because there's such a professionalization of everything. Where, and, and so everything has to be, uh, every piece of information that is used by, um, and I'm, and I'm obviously making broad strokes. But, but it seems that, in order for administration to consider a piece of information valuable, it has to come from an incredibly high priced consultant. And it's like when your neighbor could have told you. And, um, and I don't know how we actually fix that because that is an issue. And it's unfortunate because it costs us so much money. However, if there was, if there were good archives, properly cabinet, easily accessible and, um, and that there was, uh, respect for the historical record. We would, we would, that would have, I mean, in those two cases, I mean, gosh, the parquet, that would have saved us $12 million. Or 22 actually is what it turned out to be, right?
Twenty two. Yeah.
It was budgeted to be 12 million. It ended up costing 34.
That's right. And the only reason we had our asses saved from that one is a brilliant business move done by Colin Kinsley and his counsel, where they did a land use deal with Fortis B C that scored us something like 25 mil that kind of offset just terrible business moves by our city. So anyway, that's for another podcast, another time. So you believe then obviously that the citizen is the establishment that should be the record place for these types of things. Shouldn't we have a city record place for these things too, though? I feel like the Prince George Citizen might go through business moves eventually where maybe they get sold and maybe those archives disappear on the, on us in that sale too. Maybe the citizen's a great place to communicate them, but maybe we need a place that the city controls as well. That we can hold these things so that as the city is alive, it never goes away.
Well, it's an excellent idea, but I can guarantee you it'll cost significantly more than even a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Very true. Yeah.
For a year because, um, yeah, the, the, because some, a few people have asked me, well, why'd you put a hundred thousand dollars in the budget? Like, that seems really awful. And I said, well, you've got a, like, the budget before the citizen was removed as, uh, through the bylaws as paper of record. The, uh, I think the, the budget was for advertising in the citizen was a hundred and fifty thousand. So.
Yeah, I think you're right. Yeah. Yeah. No, you make some good points there. Actually, you've pulled me a little bit more back on side to maybe having the citizen as a part of these public record in some way, shape or form. And it's definitely a question I'll be bringing to other councillors as I get a chance to chat with them as well. So thank you. Thank you for your opinion on that one too.
And I, and maybe, if I can, I'll just say one more thing about, um, I know a few people have been saying, well, why wouldn't you spread the money around? And it's like, okay, but like to the other local media that are very important and, and do a great work in our community as well. And well, my point is, point is to that is that we're, I'm not talking about, you know, subsidizing local media. What I'm talking about is that paper of record quality that, that's, um, thus far it's been rested versus the citizens. So.
It's funny because that, I, it's in my notes right here. I was going to question you on, well, you picked the citizen. Why'd you pick the citizen? What about, what about, what about? But you quickly answered that anyway. So we just scratched that out. But no, you make, you make very good points there. Um, maybe the old system, exactly the way it was, isn't our fix today, but maybe they could be a part of a new system that works for everybody too. But yeah, um, we, we need records badly. We've seen hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars spent. Just because we didn't have proper records. So no, you make a very good point. Uh, two more things I want to get to, and then anything you want to get to, we'll dive into as well. But, uh, I kind of want to just get your idea. What is your 10,000 foot level of the future of Prince George? Crazy question.
Oh, oh, the future of Prince George, if, 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 uh, if count like, like, so the, so the Prince George, this is something John Brink said when I was chatting with him quite a same time ago. And he said, Prince George will grow regardless. Simply because of our position in, in, on the continent and in the world. But, but I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't run for politics just to see Prince George just sputter along and grow in spite of itself. I really think that if, if we were able to capitalize in a more fulsome way on the incredible potential on Prince George. It's, it's crazy. We have, um, like we, like we, at minerals north, there were a number of, like, we heard a lot of presentations from, uh, mining companies that are in the, in the northwest of B C. There are, there is, there is trillions and trillions of dollars worth of, of minerals available to be mined in that area. And, and that, all of that business, um, will be coming in some way or some way of, some shape or way through Prince George. And so the fact, I mean, so a lot of the hard materials, like the exports might, will be going through Prince Rupert. And so we won't be seeing that end of it, but the supply end, this is where we would shine. And if we could, um, realize that potential that we have here, I think that's something that, I mean, that was reflected in my, uh, my motion during the O C P process, which, which I tried to get across with the ring road. And, um, and just because we need better logistics, like for our inter, like our intermodal system that we have in our city in order to get things on into the C cans to ship out to Prince Rupert. We need better connections with, um, with, uh, with our highways and, and having a ring road or a boundary road, whatever we call it, but bypass. That'll take that heavy traffic out of our downtown and make it so much easier for, uh, truck traffic to come through. And, and some of the arguments that I heard, I was, I was frankly quite disappointed because somebody said, well, then people aren't going to stop at our retail shops. And it's like, no, 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 we are not Hickson. We are not Cornell. This is not what we're talking about here. Anybody who doesn't stop to fuel up in Prince George is not going far. Let's just put it that way. And, uh, so we're not going to miss that traffic, but what we need is to recognize our incredible position as, I mean, as Mayor Yu often says, and, um, like we could be a circumfular capital. Uh, just because of our positioning close to Asia, like we are, I think, um, I mean, and when, when, when the airport was built, like smart people understood the importance that our airport could fulfill. And we just haven't been able to realize that. I have no idea why that hasn't happened. Uh, smarter people than me would know. But I think part of it is just that, um, the knowledge and maybe the like, and, and I'm not, I'm not even the best advocate for this because I'm, because I don't know enough about it. But, but, but I know that, that the potential of Northern B C is, is astounding. And I think, I think Prince George is uniquely, um, uh, situated to take advantage of that. And and instead of being just a, well, yeah, we have to go through Prince George. It's like, wow, Prince George has all of this. And to service the industry and the growing industry that is, that is up here.
Absolutely. Yeah. I, I'm, I'm actually, uh, coming up very soon. I, I want to have Colin Kinsley on as well. Actually living down in Arizona. But one thing that his counsel was really focused on was doing business with, um, places like Fortis B C and B C Hydro. We're a land rich city. We should be looking into not just taking taxes for the money that we need to run this place. We should also be looking at deals much like we did with Fortis B C, where they can use our land for a while and we give them a chance to possibly own it later on. We've got a ton of it. I don't know how many parks we decommissioned in the past 10 years because they just didn't fit our plan anymore. How many of these areas could we actually turn into, uh, into usage areas for these places and get money for them? Rather than them being something that's taking away from our resources at the end of the day. So I really like your, your thought process on that. And I think that's exactly where we need to go. I think our taxes, we've, we've got everything figured out. We did that downtown revitalization thing a little while ago. Got all the buildings to look good. Everybody raised their taxes on it. We did that. Good. I think we've maxed that. We're raising taxes to a point where it's hurting people now. I think business deals are where Prince George needs to go because we do have so many of those opportunities and it just seems like we're missing the connection somehow.
Yeah. Missing the connections is a great way to put that. And, uh, you know, during the O C P, there was one of these members of the public said, Prince George is, yes, it's eight hours from everywhere, but we're also in the middle of everything.
That's right.
And, and, uh, yeah, so.
That really hammered home for me in the last little while too. Uh, seven years ago, I took a job as a liquor rep for the northern half, basically of the province. So I do Prince George all the way to the Yukon and all the way out to Prince Rupert too. Once you start driving those roads on a regular basis, you realize how many of those people are making regular trips through Prince George just to get their own resources set and to support their own communities too. So.
Yeah. So they'll be helping Prince George.
Exactly. Exactly. Yeah. Uh, we did actually get a question from, um, somebody online too. So I did put a post up last night saying that you were going to be on the show and just ask if anybody had any questions. Uh, and we got one. So let's dive into that here. Mary Jane Fournier said, please become familiar with the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, the I C L E I. And then sign up for the K I L C, K I C L E I. An organization to help councils understand why we should not be a member of the I C L E, I C L E I. Prince George is a member and it allows unelected bureaucrats, uh, to dictate how local cities all over the world develop policies for their city. We need to keep our decisions local and I hope that our elected leaders will make themselves familiar with the I C L E E I and unjoint. Do you, uh, do you know what she's talking about here? Do you understand this thing that we're involved in?
This is something that I just recently, because I've been getting their emails and I'm not sure if I'm, I don't think I was, I subscribe, but I've been reading their concerns and, 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 and like honestly, I haven't looked into it too much, but I know I was as the Community Energy Sustainability Event that happened about six weeks ago here in our city. And, uh, one of the, the I C L E, I think that's how you say that acronym. Members was there and, um, yeah. And it was like, oh, okay, this is what they're talking about. So I, that is actually something that I need to do a bit more research on because I agree that our decisions need to be local. I, I think it's utterly useless for us to be, especially as a city to be, um, you know, signing on to these international things unless there's an actual benefit to us. And, and, and I don't see any checks coming from I C L E to us yet. So.
I was like, are we paying them? Are we, are we paying them by any chance? And why? So I.
You know, if I take a look through the, uh, to the things that we're, we're paying for, I, yeah, I, yeah. So that it's, it's a really good point because I, I think as especially, this is interesting because especially as, um, as First Nations, I mean, they're already so much more integrated into our economy and into everything than they were, you know, even 20 years ago. Or even 10 years ago, as, as, um, I think you're going to be finding that more and more people will find that of value to, to say, no, 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 stop. We need to stop it with the international, uh, agreements and associations. And actually just look at the wealth that we have here locally. And not to say that, you know, international organizations can be of use and helpful, but, but I think, I think, um, oftentimes though international organizations have been used to, to be more of a thumb down and down to the, especially to uh, more remote areas like ours rather than lifting up because those, and those organizations like that have been around a long time. And I don't see our governments investing in us, you know, and in any significant way more than, or, or, or in the words of uh, Colleen Swims, mayor of Thompson, Manitoba. When you're asking the provincial government for money, it's, you're asking for your own money back.
That's right.
And so I'm not sure we're getting, getting more of our own money back with being, being part of those organizations.
Yeah, this, I, I'm glad that Mary, Mary Jane brought this up. Actually, I did, uh, dive into it a little bit myself. Just to kind of see what this was about. Oh, I don't have it here anymore. But you know what? Maybe you and I'll chat about that in our next podcast. Maybe we can get together and talk about that once we've done a little bit more, uh, looking into it. I did look at their webpage and they were talking a lot about the smart cities and a lot of those things, which I know quite a bit about. I've dove into those after the buzzwords have come across. So I would like to see how they're tied into that exactly.
Let me talk to you a bit about that. Like how much, like so the smart cities, cities thing, like all of us want smart growth, like in, like smart meaning just the regular term smart, like not the trademark word smart. We want things to be well built, well designed. We want good planning. We all want that. Like everybody's in favor of that. However, if you're looking at, um, what my understanding is of, of the smart trademark, smart cities is where you're spending tons of money into technology. And it's like, I'm thinking, okay, if there's anything we need less of, it's technology in our, in how, in our community and how we relate to each other. Right? And in my, my, like, like in, I would not be in favor of spending any money on any of those initiatives. Because I don't, for one, I don't see the value and I, and number two, we need to spend money on building our communities, our neighborhoods and our, our, and ways for, for residents to be able to connect and meet up and, and places to, you know, you know, more parks, like that's the kind of thing that will actually build your community and build value into your community by, by giving place, people places to, to be, to go, to recreate, to, to meet up, that kind of thing. And, uh, and I know, like some of the smart cities things, just so that you have a better handle on what your residents are doing as well. Really, I don't need to know what people are doing. Like, I don't want to do.
That's where this gets weird. Like the, 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 the original marketing of smart cities sounds wonderful. Hey, we're, we're going to have everything you need in like, uh, you know, a hundred block radius. So you can just ride your bike and you'll be able to go to the movies and you can get your groceries and sounds wonderful. But then you look into one step further from that and it becomes into a controlling of people actually moving around or eyes on top of them and what they're doing and how they're doing it. And like, we don't need that. We've got enough eyes on us. We've given up all of our privacy. We just need cities to run properly and be convenient for us. That's what we're looking for.
And, and, and again, this is something that a member of the public spoke about at the O C P hearing, uh, is that, uh, okay, wait a minute, a minute, you know, 15 minute city and being within 15 minute walk to your grocery store sounds nice. But when it's 20, 25, 30, 40 below, nobody's walking to the grocery stores. I mean, there, I mean, there might be a few diehards and kudos to them. Well done. But we have to actually consider the fact that we are winter cities and, and, um, you have to act. And, and when you don't think about that, like you're actually actively harming your residents. And, um, and so that's why, again, these international ideas, you know, some of them are sound great, like being within 15 minutes or being close to your grocery store. Like that is perfect. And like, wouldn't do like, and that would give opportunities maybe for more globally owned, smaller grocery stores, that kind of thing. So like you said, it sounds great. But you also have to consider the fact that we are a winter city and, uh, yeah. And, and again, you know, what are we doing to, to, in terms of for the small local grocer? Like what are we doing as a city to enable more small businesses to, to set up shop? Um, you know, how strict is our zoning? And, uh, like, there's tons of questions and tons of ways that we can be better at, at helping them to develop.
Hundred percent. Yeah. Yeah. I think, you know, when, when I think of smart cities and I go, okay, like, what is this idea meant for? And then I think of like China, I think of Beijing, China. And I go, yes, I totally understand a smart, a smart city in Beijing, China, where they're packing, you know, 30 million people into the same area of Prince George or something like that. I get it. You guys have issues that we don't, but it does seem like a control method when you're putting it on to uh, populations as small as ours and the way that they are, are seeming to try to do it. So I, I want to wrap my head around this thing that Mary Jane brought up for sure and see what their idea of smart cities are and see if it's leaning into that. Or if it is more of a convenience thing. But yeah, uh, thanks, Mary Jane, for bringing it up and thank you for approaching that, even though we, you and I are not fully educated on it yet. Could you take a look anyway? This has been great. That's, that's pretty much all the questions I had for you today. Thanks so much for coming on today, Trudy. I would love to do this again, uh, sometime in the near future. As I said, my goal is to get all of you city councillors on here before the next election. I would like to have a nice deep talk about, you know, the different motions that you guys are teaming up for, find out, uh, kind of what your 10,000 foot level is of the future of the city. And, uh, just kind of explain some things. In this day of, day and age of social media, I think a lot of people read headlines and think they have a full understanding. And I think that, uh, you know, little supplemental conversations like this can really help explain our points a little bit more fully. And hopefully we can be more efficient at the end of the day. So thank you very much for joining us today.
I'm honored to be, uh, your first guest, being back and just wish you all the very best. And I just thank you for your public service. This truly is a public service and, and just thank you very much, Matt.
Hey, anytime. Yeah, you betcha. And reach out anytime. If you have anybody, uh, in your sphere that, uh, you think would be interesting, that could talk about issues in the area, definitely let me know. Um, we're going to try and do this twice a month is kind of my goal to start with, but eventually I'd like to do at least one a week. So fire me any interesting people you have in your sphere.
Okay, we'll do, we'll do. All right. Well, thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you.